I accept the resignation of Marge Cooney. Consideration and possible action on new appointment, introduction of veterans agent, department reports, DVW Police Department, town administrators update, and then action items which include consideration and possible action on improving the hometown heroes banner program, consideration and possible action on a special use permit for Opakam Land Trust from April 19th to April 27th for school vacation week, consideration and possible action on issuance of one day liquor license to Tudi Quanti for pickleball university tournament on May 9th, 2025 at 178 C Main Street, consideration and possible action on a one day liquor license for April 26, 2025 at the Sturbridge Town Commons Spring Bonfire Event, consideration and possible action on a one day liquor license to Bliss Point Meadery for the Sturbridge Farmers Market for Sundays from June 1st to October 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., a consideration and possible action on acceptance of a $300 donation from CMG Environmental to the Fire Department, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of a donation of $1,000 from Scott Dean for the Trails Committee, a consideration and possible action on the acceptance of a donation of $300 from Jeffrey E. Carey for the Trails Committee, consideration and possible action on opening the annual town meeting warrant, consideration and possible action on closing the same, consideration and possible action on opening the special town meeting warrant, a consideration and possible action on closing the same, and then consideration and possible action to sign the annual and special town meeting warrant, a consideration and possible action of setting the town water rates at 872 per 100 cubic feet, 3.2 percent, consideration and possible action of setting the town sewer rates at 1607 per 100 cubic feet, 6.4 percent, and flat sewer to $243, 6.4 percent, and old business correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, executive session and adjournment. So with that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I would just like to take a moment of silence to think about all the people in the South and the Midwest being affected by these terrible storms and just a prayer for their safety and recovery. Thank you. All right, moving to public service announcements. Mary Lou, any?
No.
Mary Allen?
No.
Jamie, none? Moving on to new business. So I think our friends from the ZBA want to come on down and call your meeting, I suspect, if that's what we're doing. Did we get enough? Hey, Josh, you didn't even have to go.
Slide right forward.
All right, are you going to call a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening, and we are opening up the joint meeting with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen and the Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals to consider the appointment of Stephen Posamato?
Posama.
Posama, okay. For the zoning board of appeals term to expire on September 17th, 2025. Also, we accept the resignation of Marge Cooney, and again, we thank her for her service and knowledge and a good member of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so I think that the, I have the term up as September 6, 2025? Is that seven, should it be September 17th?
It should be September 17th. Seventeenth.
Okay, good to know. All right. Well, so first of all, I guess I'll just kind of keep going in order. We have the consideration and possible action on accepting the, acceptance of resignation of Margaret Cooney from the zoning board of appeals effective March 17th, 2025. So first of all, I would just like to say, Marge, I grew up, I grew up right in front of her on Shepherd Road, and she was right behind me on Hillside, and her husband, John, and their son, John, and their daughter are just, were lovely neighbors, and that just goes throughout the whole community. Marge was constant, has a family friend, constant, has a participant in our community, and she's just been constant. So I love Marge, I wish her nothing but the best, and just thank her for her service. So with that, unless anybody else has something to say, would we have a motion on item A?
I also want to thank her. I don't know her like Jamie does, but 27 years of service, and she says, "It's been a pleasure to serve the town that I love," and Sturbridge certainly loves her, and all those people who get that involved because it's stateless sometimes, you know, and so, I know she's watching, but it's going to be hard to replace, but...
All right, so with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Margaret Cooney from the zoning board of appeals effective March 17th, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? And I think you guys need to do the same thing we do.
Do I have a motion to accept Marge Cooney's resignation from the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, I make a motion to accept Marge Cooney's resignation from the zoning board of appeals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Great.
With regret.
With regret, very much. All right, so moving on to consideration and possible action on the appointment of Stephen Posamato. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds like a no, but okay.
Just trying.
To the zoning board of appeals effective April 8, 2025 until September 17, 2025. Do you have any questions?
I will say Jean has met with you.
Yes.
And discussed the role Jean Buban has met, recommends, and supports this appointment.
Anything from the board, questions, comments? All right, do we have, oh, that's it?
I said awesome. It's trying to lighten the evening, it's been dreary all day.
I know. Chase is here now, so it's like way worse.
That's bad news, yeah.
Sorry. I'm just kidding.
And I tell people it's an amicable board.
Chase can't control the Massachusetts Turnpike. So, so the, no, but do we have a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Your dad will be happy based on your letter of interest, right, 30 years.
When you said bankless, I'm like, he, yeah. Nothing knows about bankless, so that's not, forget it.
They officially need to, you know, they need to vote to appoint, and then it's her.
Do I have a motion to accept Stephen Posamato to the zoning board of appeals?
So moved.
Second?
I second. Yeah, he can have it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, now, do I have a motion for the zoning board of appeals to adjourn their meeting?
Yes.
Second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving onwards. Okay, we are moving to department reports. Heather, we can start with you?
Nope, nope, you have, you have Michelle, the interim.
Oh, I'm sorry, never mind. Heather, one minute.
Michelle, come on up. So, as you know, our former VSO no longer is with us, and obviously, we all are very supportive of Mike's decision, and we're hoping he's getting some really good time with his son and his wife right now. In the meantime, I had looked into a couple of different options, and just very briefly, because the board needs to be aware of this as we move forward to appoint a permanent position, the laws have changed in the past few years, and so there's a difference between a VSO now and a veterans agent. They can do everything, including VA work for the state and the feds. In the past, you could have a VSO, it could be like what Mike was, it could be appointed someone out of an American Legion, but they could not do the VA work. Mike was running into problems with me, he would say, "People are coming to me, I can't do their VA work." In order to do the VA work, I believe it has to be 20 hours a week minimum that they work, plus go through a certification program. So what's taken me so long is, how did I want to do this? We don't need 20 hours' worth alone. I talked to a couple other communities about if we wanted to regionalize, or if they had someone who would want to share, and Michelle reached out to me knowing, because Michelle actually helped me one time before with a veteran, and I knew her from Westbrookfield, where I get to Brookfield's confused, and Michelle had reached out. She is certified to do all of the VA work, she's Massachusetts certified. I spoke with the woman at the state, who has confirmed that Michelle is perfectly capable of coming in and stepping into this role for us, at least in an interim until I can post and advertise. I do believe I'm going to advertise for the full veterans agent as opposed to a VSO, because if we can't serve the VA concerns as well, we're, you know, we're not, we're going to be sending people all over the place. So in the interim, we're starting with this concept of an agent with our interim person. Michelle, you work in Lemonster, Westbrookfield?
Lunenburg, Templeton, Westbrookfield, Warren, and now you guys.
So some varying number of hours, more or less than us. Michelle does realize if she is here during this interim capacity, it's expected that she'll help with Memorial Day, so taking part of the community as well as working with the veterans. She actually started her work today. I just wanted to introduce you to her. When it's time to appoint a permanent, it will come in front of the board as a department head, but I just wanted you to be aware, that's the direction I think we should go. If the board would prefer that we stay with a VSO, we can. I just think we offer more service for the same money to our residents, so.
Makes sense to me. Any questions?
How many hours is this?
It's 10 hours we do in town.
Okay, so you're not altering the hours?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we're increasing the service but maintaining the hours.
Background is very impressive.
Yeah.
And of course, she has served as is required at the position, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I mean, all right, great, well, welcome aboard. I don't think there's anything else.
Thanks for coming back. I just wanted the board to see the face and put a face with a name.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'll post the permanent position probably in a week or two, but in the meantime, at least we know our veterans have served.
Great.
And how long are you willing to serve in this capacity pending a full-time appointment?
For as long as you need the help.
That's what we wanted to hear.
Yeah, no, honestly, I don't turn veterans and their families away. I mean, that's my work ethic anyways, so I've reached out. I had veterans from your community calling about three weeks to a month ago, and so I reached back out to her, because I don't like to step on people's toes if there was somebody in this slot. So I reached back to your community and said, "Do you have an agent in this position?" She said, "No," and I said, "Okay, then I'll help your veterans," because I didn't want to step on the agent that was working here, if that was the case. And when she said there was no one here, then I just went and assisted anyways, so.
Mike had indicated that until we did fill, he was willing to help out, but I really, he wasn't on a pay, and it just felt unfair to continue with that expectation of somebody. And as I said, Michelle, it was a Friday afternoon, I think, that a veteran came in to me about, maybe a year ago, eight months or a year ago that was homeless, and I was panicking on a Friday afternoon trying to find someone who would help me, and this is the person who picked up the phone on the other end and helped this gentleman who was in some pretty difficult position, so.
Yeah, and I just want to echo Mary Lou's sentiments. For those watching, 25 years in both the Navy, combined Navy, Army, payroll, a chaplain, and administrative clerk, like you said, diversified roles, but a long commitment to the armed services, so, yeah, excellent choice.
Again, thank you. All right, well, get out of your hair, at least for now.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you again.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming in.
Did we, do we have to?
No, for an interim, you don't have to. I've already appointed as an interim. When it becomes a full-time, when we advertise and go through, I am going to have Leslie Wong sit in on interviews with me for the position, because Leslie's population crosses over.
Makes sense. Great. All right, Heather, now you're up.
Good evening. I believe you all have my monthly reports. The good news is, although you can't tell it right now, it does seem like we're finally coming out of winter.
Yeah, right.
We thought we were out of it. So we are starting to do some of our spring cleanups and cleaning up different grounds and everything and getting ready, so we'll be heavily preparing for Memorial Day. On my side of things, we are still working to get our road bids out, so that will be happening. I got some feedback from the engineers that helped us put the pavement management study together for our crack sealing and going to look to doing some slurry seal type work on some of the roads, so we're putting that out, figuring that out, and then we'll be putting our list of our full depth, our more major construction out, prioritizing those first and then back to the other. Which Maple Street will be on that list. That was one that we know we're doing, but still trying to figure out how many more we can add. So if you have any questions, I think that's basically it. I'm sure you're, you know, the other big news from my department is unfortunately, my second in command has resigned. She cited some family matters that, you know, it was a lot for her to juggle with a young child at home, so. So that will be also being reposted, so now we're juggling a lot of projects. You will be hearing about later tonight, when we reopen the special town meeting, we are working on the filter media project at the water tube implant, the replacement project. We have, this is the only part of Shane's meeting that I'll step on toes, just so you have the background. They have taken the first filter offline, removed the media, and had the tank inspected. The tank inspection has shown that there is some pitting on the inside of the tank that needs to be addressed, and that is why we're opening the special town meeting for additional funding, because although we included one day of welding for pitting, the level of the welding that's required is much, is more than that one day, it's more like five days. So we're going to assume that the other two tanks will need the same type of treatment, and therefore, we're going to need some additional funding.
And this is one of those things, and we'll talk about it more, but it's a DEP issue if we do not do this. This is a water quality issue, so.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. So it's effectively tank integrity, it's getting pitted from whatever acoustic is in.
Right, so you couldn't see inside the tank until the media was out, obviously, so we didn't, unforeseen condition, and, you know, they've given us an estimate of what they think this one tank, they haven't done the other two, but we're going to assume the same, so we have enough funding, and we'll go from there.
Makes sense. All right.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Actually, I do have one, not for tonight, but, you know, you gave us that very detailed pavement management plan, and you said that's a chunk of information to try to digest. When you can, do you think that maybe we can just have like a two-page, you know, memo, something to how to read it, or just like highlight it? Because like that could, when people aren't in that line of work, I mean, I really couldn't make heads details out, other than knowing it's very detailed and every road has been looked at, and, but just, just for laypeople, like a little overview.
Yeah, we can pull a summary together.
Nothing, you know, not 10 pages long, obviously, but just something.
Summary memo.
Yeah, because even when people ask me, I mean, I don't.
No, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
All right, great. Anything else for Heather? Thanks, Heather.
Thanks, Heather.
All right, Chief.
Good evening.
Evening.
Start with, I got December, January, and February, let's throw them up quickly. Start with December. We had 3,005 calls for service, 51 arrests slash complaints, which nine were OUI, one was a drug arrest, 36 incident reports, 45 motor vehicle crash reports, 180 citations were issued, 62 motorists were assisted, we responded to 54 alarms, did 666 house checks or business checks, served two, 5209As, had 12 domestic disturbances, seven larcenies. We requested mutual aid 12 times in December, which brought it up to a total of nearly 200 times where we request other police departments to help us during the year 2024, and we responded out of town once in a total of 13 times for the whole year. We assisted other agencies. For operations, we had our annual senior Christmas dinner at the Federated Church downstairs, that went very well. High, I want to say there was about 60 seniors that showed up. We served them, it was a great time. And for training, the big training was, then Lieutenant Lombardi graduated the FBI National Academy, which is a 10-week school down in Quantico, Virginia, so we successfully completed that and brought back a wealth of knowledge for us here. 235 radar assignments, 372 motor vehicle stops, two calls at Burgess, one was just an admin call, and one was an alarm call, one call at the junior high, it was just an administrative call, and then a well-being check. That was just a parent looking for a child, which was, they were located. Assisted another police agency, was serving some legal paperwork, and there was a threat against a school, then a foot patrol, and then 911 call with a total of five calls there. That's my December report. So anybody have any questions?
Questions on December?
January 2025, 2,924, I do just want to add that we're, total calls for service for 2024 were 32,831, which put us up about 2,630 more calls than the previous year. So 2,924 calls for January, 44 arrests, five of them were OUIs, one was a drug arrest, 34 incident reports, 27 motor vehicle accident reports, 155 citations, 46 motorists were assisted, 51 alarm calls, 710 business checks, six, 209A orders served, six domestics we responded to, four larcenies or BNEs, requested mutual aid five times, responded out of town zero times, operation business as usual. Let's see, training, nothing major to report there. 272 total radar assignments, 342 total motor vehicle stops, four calls at Burgess, two of them were accidents, one was alarm, three calls at the junior high, one was a threat, a shooting threat, and the second was an ambulance call, and then two calls at the senior high, which was, one was just a documented foot patrol, and then the other one was harassment. That's my January report. Question?
Questions on January? Nope, thanks, Chief.
All right, moving on to February. 2,996 calls, 40 arrests, five of them were OUIs, one was a drug arrest, 28 incident reports, 25 motor vehicle accident reports, 188 citations were issued, we assisted 73 motorists, we had 44 alarms, 779 business and house checks, we served six restraining orders, and responded to six domestic disturbances. We had two BNEs or larcenies, requested help seven times in that month, and we responded out of town once. Department operations, nothing significant to report, training, nothing significant to report, 212 radar assignments, 353 motor vehicle stops. We responded to Burgess three times, one was just a 911 call, the other one was a dog bite, but that didn't happen at the school, that was just a dog bite, kid went to school, and the school was concerned one of them checked out. So, an alarm call, there was a threat or harassment, that was a bullying incident at the junior high, and then alarm call, two alarm calls, that was a total of three calls at the junior high, there was a power outage at the senior high, administrative call for service and 911, and we assisted Warren PD with an investigation there. That's February.
Anything on February? Hey, Chief, I think you're, you're the go, unless there's anything else for them.
I just have a quick question. Remember how we used to have grants that allowed you to go undercover to see if, you know, underage?
Yeah, they did away with them.
No, I know. Have we ever tried to apply for another one, or did we consider doing it without a grant? Because it's been a few years, and it seemed like every year, sadly enough, some establishment was, you know?
Yeah, well, I could probably put something together for an overtime assignment or something you was one of our interns for, but the grants did go away, and it was through the state, and for whatever reason, they stopped it, because that included, we would do surveillance on like Yankee Spirits or the other package stores to see if there was underage attempts to purchase alcohol, and, and then they just, the grant went away, but I could probably do some, some.
I don't know how everybody else feels, I'm just curious about.
Yeah.
What kind of money does that require?
We'd have to hire officers on overtime, and then the intern would be, the person that was, like, I would say intern, but maybe just some, somebody volunteering from the school, which we've had in the past, and, you know, if we did it for, you know, eight hours, maybe two, couple blocks at four, we could hit probably all the businesses in the town. So it's not that expensive to do it.
I don't know, I'm just, just, you know, as you know, my pastime is running, and there's just so many nip bottles that I see on the side of the road, Route 15, 131, 20, and I'm thinking, I'm not saying it's youth that are necessarily drinking this, but anyway...
I think the problem is it's not.
I know, that's what got me going, thinking though, you know, DUIs and stuff, because, I mean, somebody's throwing those nip bottles out, it's terrible, as well as smelling marijuana.
When I'm riding my bicycle, I see them, it's usually the same kind in the same spot, so you know somebody's on their way home, and every day, the same, before they get home, it's going out the window.
I bet you it's all fireball.
A lot, yes.
Same with cannabis, like, it smells so much on 20 and 131 when I'm outside, and, you know, we don't have an effective method yet, right? When you pull over for DUI, you have them, you know?
We send all of our officers to advanced driving impaired, advanced impaired drive-in school, it's called ARIDE, so it helps them with other techniques, but what the courts, getting conviction on OUI is extremely difficult in Massachusetts, so, but we do send, we send our officers to specialized training, advanced training, than what they get in the police academy for OUI drug charges.
So knowing when is a good time to pull a car over, you're saying, or, or once they pull them over, they are able to?
Give them certain types of tests, so they get, they get trained to do certain types of tests, looking on eyes, and if we get, we're not really sure, we, the state has, I don't know how many, but drug recognition experts, so maybe we'll call the state police, or we'll put it out over the general radio saying, "Are there any drug recognition experts working?" And they come on, they do blood pressure, they do all kinds of stuff, but that's usually after somebody's already been placed under arrest, we're just trying to figure out what kind of drug they're on, so.
Do we get a lot, do we pull over a lot for?
For drugs, OUI drugs, yeah, we do a fair amount, a lot of OUI alcohol, for sure, but we do, I think, like, just through this report, there was one, one every month from, one OUI drug every month for these three months, so.
Not a lot, I mean, that, right?
Not, not a ton, but, you know, it is, if somebody's popping pills while they're driving, it's very difficult to know unless they're foaming at the mouth or...
Oh, no, I get the pills, I'm just talking more about the amount of people that I think are smoking while they drive.
Right.
Just because I'm outside on the road, and, you know, it's actually not funny because that affects their reflexes, just as much as alcohol, I mean, it's another drug, and I'm just amazed at the amount of, like, cannabis you can smell from cars.
While just driving, driving down the road.
That's what I'm saying, and I didn't know if we, all right.
Hey, Chief.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Chief. All right, Robin?
Yeah, so quickly, I didn't do a biweekly, because I have cover sheets for a couple of things, but just, just want to update, the 250th Celebration Committee has continued to meet. We will be adding Sandy Quigley as a member, she's asked to join as well, we didn't have a cap on the number. Leslie is going to be my staff liaison for this, and I want to thank Representative Smola came by today to meet with the group to talk about state grants and other things that we might be doing in partnership with other parts of the state, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. Secondly, Mary called me last week with an important question about a possibility of an urgent care coming in. It is coming in, it is going, well, it's scheduled for construction, it has gone through and passed planning and conservation. I apologize that you did not know about that ahead, because that's really kind of good news for the town. They had tried before, but there was another business associated with them, the DOT was not comfortable with that kind of traffic, it's right across from the Cracker Barrel. So we'll see some traffic regulations on that, one way in, one way out kind of thing, so DOT is working on that. That's one of the reasons that I know we've talked.
So it's just on the Pike, right in front of the Pike entrance, on coming?
Right on 20, on the, yeah, on the north side of 20.
So we're the, the Cracker Barrel, so it's up past?
So we're, so we're the, the Cracker Barrel, so it's, it's up past the Cracker Barrel?
On the other side, but I think, I think residential homes are coming out.
Yeah, I think those little residential homes that are there, were all part of that property that were for sale for a while. And that's, and it brings us to the question of, I know I've been doing the weekly memos, and it's not just so you know that I work, but I, that's, I started doing those, because things like that, because I'd been on design review that month before I had started this, I think things like that can fall off my radar a little bit, and it's, if I do those months, those weeklies, I think I tend to keep things a little better on my radar for you, and then if you have a question on any of them, because I don't think we've talked about those memos publicly, if you have a question on any of those things, I throw all that out there, because one of them might bubble up to be a question for you, so. And then Jamie asked, and I think he's right, the, putting an update on open positions, department head positions, and just that way, you guys are in the loop every week. So, thank you.
Yeah, so thanks, Robin. Any questions for you guys on that?
No.
No, all right, moving onwards. All right, we're moving to Hometown Heroes Banner Person Program.
So, Crystal is here for Memorials and Monuments. A while back, I approached you and asked, because residents had asked me if we could start with a, and you could pass these down too, a memorials and, a Hometown Heroes program. And you all told me that as long as I had volunteers willing to do it, you supported it. So, when we created the Memorials and Monuments Committee, it seemed like a natural fit that they would take the lead on this for me. So not only did the committee take the lead, but Crystal herself took the lead, and has, huh?
Lots of help.
Lots of help, but you, you did the bulk of this lifting, and has worked with other communities, and this new program proposal that I just passed out is basically from other communities, a combination of things from other communities, and now adapted to Sturbridge. We still have a few things to work out, I've got to work out with Barbara how we can, because people pay for these individually, so we have to set up some type of a special revenue account, so the expenses that go out are associated with this, so I still have to work with Barbara a little bit on the finance side. I've got a message out to National Grid about the poles, in my cover memo to you, I gave you a sense of where we're talking about putting these, primarily the gateways. The, the most immediate gateway, I see this is coming every day, I come in from Southbridge to Hall Road, before you get to the Commons, because once we get to the Commons, it would be the American flags, we don't mess with that section. But until we get to Hall Road, I believe I counted one morning forty-some-odd poles, I was looking up in the air like an idiot counting, and we think that's the start for where we would like to start, and then on the other end, where we can, on poles down at the gateway toward Holland, and at the gateway, Holland Brimfieldway, and then also the gateway coming off eighty-four, near that Cracker Barrel on Route twenty. But we really would like those to be gateways as you enter into towns, a lot of towns do either their central downtown or gateways, we don't really have a central downtown. And that's a sample of what we're looking at, that's about the size that a lot of the communities are using, we like that design, that's obviously North Boroughs. And I just want to have the board's support, and Crystal, if you want to add, if you'd like to add on this?
Yeah, no, I have, so I handed out what we're going to try and do for, like, the press release, but even the preliminary things I've had, we've only had two meetings over it, so we're, we're still working on plugging in all our information, we're still waiting on final quotes for the banners and the brackets and all of that, but I just kind of wanted you guys to see what we've been working on in the committee to try and get this going. I know we were kind of hoping for next May of twenty twenty-six, but I think we're going to try and push for, like, July around the two-fiftieth, which I think would be really cool.
Start before-
Our committee is taking on meetings every other week to try and get this out and finalized. So, the woman we're working with, Leslie Arsenal, she's a Gold Star mother, and her and a couple of other mothers, they run a program, and it's out of North Borough, but she does work with a bunch of different towns, and they do have kind of the same platform, the same consistency throughout, and it's worked for all the other surrounding towns. She said she would love to come in and talk to the board about it, too, when we get into the final steps. She also said she would volunteer to make a banner, I made the mock-up one with Mr. Julian, but whatever she'll put together is going to be a lot better, so.
Yeah, I mean, questions from the board?
I just have a couple. First of all, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I've seen it in other towns, and when I drive through, I do admire it, so I'm, I'm on board with that. Is this, in all the towns that adopt it, is it always funded solely from donations, or does the-
So they're all, they're all different, some towns do have funds that they requested the town, there's another town that does it strictly, the resident or whoever submits the request pays for it. And then, some peo, oh, she said, one, one town that she did, they recommended giving a donation instead of paying for a banner. She said, nobody did more than like a ten-dollar donation, and it was few and far between. So, we're talking about all of those too, but I think, right now, what works for everybody is the resident or doing the, the person requesting the banner does the full payment of everything. I think we had talked about the town possibly helping or absorbing the cost of the brackets for mounting them, because we will use them as we rotate the banners out.
I know I'm getting a little off-topic to- No, I'm always concerned about, like, the one person left out, because there was no funding, nobody want, you know, family member came up with the two hundred dollars, but at the same time, you have to get their permission, maybe some don't want to be on a banner, so that's like a privacy thing, too.
It's totally their choice, it's, yeah.
But I just, you know, just maybe for a future discussion.
No, no, that's like-
If somebody wants to be on a banner and they don't have a family member, you know, personally, I think the town should, should be there for them, at the same time, you don't want to squash people who are willing to make the donation, so.
Well, I think the other thing we could do is, we could have it where it's, you know, if you want one, you, you pay, but we could also open and say, anybody in town who would like to donate for those who cannot pay, we could also set up a fund, where there's a little extra money, if you will, so if we charge two hundred for people, and they're perfectly fine with that, a family might give that as a birthday gift to somebody, for example, collectively, but then we might have someone come and say, I only have fifty dollars, and we have maybe a pool, I mean, we have, we're wide open.
That would be my concern, I want them to find a way to have their banner up, even from the town, that's just my own opinion.
Yeah, when we had the meeting earlier, I think Wally said he was going to ask you about possibly setting up a fund for specifically donations.
Yeah, donation fund on top of it.
And then my other thing is, are we going to distinguish, like, by putting those who are alive and those who are deceased on the banner?
That has not been discussed yet.
Oh, I've just, because I, I don't know, like, if it, if a person is dying, maybe they're-
A landmark or signifying, yeah.
When they were born and when they passed, but, or, or do people not want that?
I think, you know, when I've gone through the towns, what I've seen a lot of times is more the dates of service than living and dying, so if you go through-
That probably tell us quite a bit right there, though.
Yeah, if you go through, like, Dudley, you can tell by the uniform sometimes, you go through Dudley, you see the guy in the patent cap, you know, patent helmet, you, you know we're talking World War II, so a lot of times, the uniform sort of indicates the era a little bit.
Oh, okay.
You see the Vietnam era with the jungle fatigues.
That's correct. Well, and, sorry, Leslie that we worked with too, she said, she has a woman who does all the templates for it, so that's something I can ask for.
I don't know, that was just one to read, you know, but you're right, you could probably-
I also think we don't want to make them too busy, because if people start reading when they're driving, so like, it's a less is more sort of thing to me, because they are still on, you know, we're putting them at a high-density thoroughfare, so I don't want people, like, even that's got a lot on it, I don't know what else you couldn't have on.
Because I was kind of-
Even, like, the, the Massachusetts probably isn't necessary, they, they know they're in North Borough, but the, but like, just, so I, this would be, that'd be my concern, because if people start reading things and they drive into things possibly while using nips or hot.
Right, no, I agree, and they're going to be put up Memorial Day through-
Well, we, yeah, more like through October.
Through Veterans Day or-
Veterans Day, excuse me, Veterans Day, yeah.
I mean, it's not a year-round program with the flags?
Well, it, it can be, Dudley's Day up, Barville's Day up, where I am.
Okay, but these are all topics for future discussion.
Yes, we're still early, I just, I just wanted the board to hear and be sure that you approve the direction we're going, the size, the scope, the, the general concept of where we're going, before we keep going down too many roads and somebody say, no, we don't like this.
So basically, the broad strokes right now are that this is the size, this is a mock-up of what we're thinking of doing, where the locations are probably going to be Southbridge and, and just, from Southbridge to Sturbridge on one thirty-one, from Charlton into Sturbridge on Route twenty, and those are the two locations.
Yeah, and then the other, and then the western.
And so we'll do all, and the Brimfield to Sturbridge as well? Okay, so you're like Brimster, or what used to be Brimster?
Brimster, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so that seems fine on me, broadly.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. I can't say how much we-
I just introduced myself to Michelle too, so she said, yeah.
Oh, wonderful, perfect, she'll help with it, yeah, that's great, good, good night to have both of you here.
And obviously, the town is going to put them up, either DPW or Fire Department.
So, when, yeah, so we're, we've talked about the fact that we have now budgeted reimbursement money to get the cherry picker for flag installation, if, whatever day we're renting the cherry picker, would be likely the day we're going to want to put banners up, I haven't even talked to Heather about this yet.
Huh?
Yeah, my, no, it'll probably be two days, so there'll be a cost to it, but it'll be done somehow, again, these are the details we're working on, poor Heather just found this out tonight, but if we're going to rent a cherry picker to do flags, then we'll rent a cherry picker, but that's part of what the, why there's a cost to this, because we, we just can only absorb so much of it.
Great, thank you so much. All right, moving, moving on, consideration and possible action on a special use permit for Opakum Land Trust from April nineteenth to April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, for School Vacation Week event, More Green, Less Green, to use Heinz Farm, Plimpton Community Forests, and Long Pond.
And this has been supported by Conservation, and everybody's all good with it, and-
Do we have any questions, if not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special use permit for Opakum Land Trust from April nineteenth to April twenty-seventh, for School Vacation Week event, More Green, Less Green.
What, sorry, second.
All right, all those in favor?
I just have a question, like, what is the event going to be?
Get out from behind the TV and get in the woods.
Is it going to be hiking, is it going to be games on a trail?
I think you have the, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's in the layout.
Oh, okay, thank you, I'll look myself.
Yeah, it's, sorry, there it is.
Self-guided Letterbox Challenge, and goal of encouraging community and children to get outside, have some fun, and explore the properties.
Okay.
All right, B is done. Consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Tudi Quanti for the Pickleball Union Tournament, May ninth, twenty twenty-five, at one seventy-eight C Main Street, Sturbridge.
I think you've seen these before, I think you've been through before.
Yeah, Mike's done a lot of these.
This is the second one of them, yeah, you need to win last year, everybody's fine.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license to Tudi Quanti for the Pickleball University Tournament, May ninth, twenty twenty-five, at one seventy-eight C Main Street, Sturbridge.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, at the Sturbridge Town Common Spring Bonfire Event. Any concerns, questions?
Is this the company that usually does it for the bonfires?
That's the same.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license to Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, at the Sturbridge Town Common Spring Bonfire Event.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And Frances Alex State.
All right, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Bliss Point Meadery for the Sturbridge Farmers Market for Sundays, June first, fifteenth, twenty-ninth, July thirteenth, twenty-seventh, August tenth, twenty-fourth, thirty-first, September seventh, twenty-one, October fifth, and October fifth, from nine AM to one PM, per MGL Chapter one thirty-one, S one, S one five F, the total fee is fifty dollars, this is deemed an agricultural event.
Yeah, so this is something we had not really taken note of in the past, and Andrew picked this up when, when he was looking at the farmers market and getting ready for it, agricultural events have a special fee structure for one-day liquor licenses multiples like this, and this is what we're allowed to charge, so.
Okay, um, have we used them before?
This, this, have they done the farmers market last year? I don't remember us having it at the farmers market last year.
So I don't believe they have been part of it before, just, just so you have, like, a frame of reference on that, why there's that limit on the price, the state considers the farmers market to be a single agricultural event, despite the fact that it's twenty separate dates.
That's, I think that makes sense, I'm more concerned about the vendor.
Who they are.
Yeah, just, so the chief signed off on them, but I, I don't think, do you guys remember seeing this?
No, I've never seen them before, but-
They also, this year, changed the laws for farmers markets regarding who can be there when it comes to alcohol sales, so obviously, they've got their very strict requirements of it being farm-based, like, you know, where they source, all that kind of stuff, but I think in the past, it was only wineries that were allowed at markets, and this year, the Department of Agriculture and the state have changed that, so, you know, breweries are allowed, mead, wine, even distilleries, they're all allowed now, as long as they meet the very specific requirements of agricultural.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great.
They're not, this is for bottles only, right? It says-
Yeah.
Off premises.
Yes, they, 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 yeah, they're, they're, they are allowed to do samples, like the limited, whatever the number is, and then, I guess, just, I guess, you know, not to throw more information in, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware that, because the markets are on Sundays, our farmers market rules are that you are there from open to close, you can't come late, you can't leave early, they will not be able to have, people will not be able to take bottles for that first hour, because it's a Sunday morning.
Okay.
So they'll be able to purchase, and they can set them aside, they can reserve them, but they can't sell alcohol, they can't, you can't take it until ten AM on a Sunday.
And the only drinking is a sample, right?
And the only drinking is a sample.
That's why I vote. That's what I, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you, all right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Action Item F.
Did you vote, oh, you voted, yeah.
Yeah, we voted, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to make a motion to accept the three hundred dollar donation from CMG Environmental of Sturbridge for the Fire Department, with our thanks for their support. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, and thank, thank them for, please send them a note expressing our appreciation, Robin?
Yeah.
All right, and then I'm going to similarly make a motion to accept the donation of a thousand dollars from Scott Dean for the Trails Committee for the purpose of purchasing bridge, purchasing bridge deck boards with thanks. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, and again, thank you to him, and then we're going to move to H, consider, I'm going to move to accept the donation of three hundred dollars from Jeffrey Carey for the Trails Committee for the purposes of purchasing bridge deck boards.
Second.
And then all those in favor? Again, thank you to him. All right, and now to the town meeting warrant.
This is just an updated version, so you can go off exactly what I'm going off of.
Okay.
Because these have changed a bit.
Yeah.
So, a couple of things have changed since FinCom has had it, plus a few things you still had to vote, like water sewer. The, let's, we'll go right in order, I want to start, we will go, first you need to motion to open it, or reopen it.
All right, I will make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant for voting in, on revised slash updated articles, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
So let's go to Article eight quickly, Article eight was the bridge, you all voted to support the bridge from the Trails to the parking lot, FinCom had voted to take no action unless it came back with different funding structure, the Trails Committee did a tremendous job bringing this back, reworking it with CPC, CPC did an excellent job on this as well, to try to get different funding and, and sort of restructure the funding on this a little bit. With that, going back to CPC, you will see the funding has changed a bit from what you originally voted, the project, I think, is about ninety thousand cheaper, there's an agreement that, I hate cheaper, less expensive, there's also an agreement that Trails will be turning back about five hundred thousand from several of its projects, that money would go toward the project rather than borrowing from other, you know, things that are overages from other programs, and there is a confidence level that there will likely be, maybe, likely And there is a confidence level that there will likely be, maybe likely a $500,000 grant as well that they tend to annually get, which would come off the borrowing. If they were to get that $500,000 grant, then it's only off about $100,000 from what CPC was going to spend out of pocket. They may actually even come back and not borrow anything at all. So it's a restructuring of it. It's a slight reduction in the cost. It's a reallocation. FinCom was willing to rehear that and then voted at 5-4. You should probably tonight revote the new funding structure, if you're supportive of it.
Okay, well, I think, you know, we discussed this at the previous meeting. I think this is kind of a no-brainer. We built the parking lot there. We still connect that whole portion of town to the trails. And the upside for the restaurants and the businesses in that part of town kind of makes it a no-brainer to me. Does anybody else have any thoughts or comment?
I agree with Jamie. I just, I guess we were as clear as we can be that where the money's coming from.
Yeah, this is, I mean, you know, because people are still just going to look at the 2.134. They really have to read all of it to figure out that it's likely... I think I likely at town meeting will probably do a full explanation before that vote, explaining that...
Okay, that would be helpful.
Yes. And I'm...
It comes down quite a bit from there when you talk about $500,000 getting transferred.
Oh, drops way down, right.
I guess we still, we still have to approve, that doesn't take the price down because we already have the money?
You still have, yes, you're still spending that much on the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, because those were voted as separate articles for separate projects. So this is still that. You can't not have that be the cost of the bridge. How we choose to pay for it, it's money that's already spent. I think the other thing that's really important is even if you did borrow, there seemed to be some confusion that if you borrow for CPC, that payment of that debt service still comes out of the same CPC fee that you pay every year. It does not increase the CPC number. So there seemed to be a sense that if you borrowed, taxes quote would go up, or CPC contribution would go up. That 3.2% or whatever it is that the fee is, stays exactly the same. So if you incur debt, CPC pays that debt service out of what it brings in. There is no increase to what it brings in. And there seemed to be a little bit of confusion about that, so I may...
I guess my only confusion is, you said, $500,000, the Trails Committee is giving back from other projects
Yes.
that we already appropriated and gave to the Trails, and they don't need it, which is great. But where is that reflected anywhere in the summation, like?
It, it, it is not, because it has, it would have to be voted by, it has to come back, be voted by CPC, and go back.
It can't be explanatory that there's also other money that...
I can verbally explain that, but we have to be...
I don't know, I'm just saying, we're being told this, but like, if any resident reads that, there's...
I know, but we have to be really careful because it is a borrowing article, so.
Okay.
We have to, how we phrase it becomes...
So if we add up the $634,000, okay, that we're going to borrow, and the $300,000 from open space, and then the undesigned fund of 1.2, that all will equal the 2.134 without the $500,000 coming back?
Right.
So, okay, I still don't totally get the math, but that's okay. I mean, I still, I'm still in favor of it. It's just that it's actually sweeter than the way...
It is, but we can't, we can't put in this article money that isn't really there yet. And until those projects return the money, I can't write that into an article.
I get it, but when are those projects returning the money?
Not till after town meeting. It'll be at least June 30th. It's probably going to be on the closeout. Okay, so you're going to have to verbally explain that. I will.
Because really, if they could return it now, then they have more money in there, and so when they look, they say, oh, it's not as depleted as we thought. We got back a half a million. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
No, I do, I do, but we'll be able to explain that. I just, it wasn't going to happen timing-wise in time to do this. I, what I may do is, I still have time, and I've done it before, I did it last year here, is do a resident Zoom meeting for any questions on any articles anyway. And if I do that, I assume that's one of the articles that may have some questions. So if I do a Zoom meeting, and I'm allowed to do that, I just, I can't lobby for an article, but I can present facts.
Okay, good, because I just foresee a question
Absolutely.
of those who are on the line. Well, how much money will they have when all this goes away? Like, how much money is going to be left for other things from the CPC?
Yep, and that's...
And that's a good opportunity to say, well, $500,000 is going back.
Well, the $500,000 is coming off the borrowing. It's not, it's not much less that we're borrowing. We're not going to borrow 1.2, but it has to be written as if we were, in case, because from a, from a legal standpoint.
The way it's reading right now, it says the treasurer with the approval of the SEC board is authorized to borrow 634,000.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, the other 500 was the grant. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, the other 500 was the grant.
So there's a, there's a grant?
Right.
There's, there's the amount that they think they're going to return at the end of the budgeted year, and then there's an additional ballpark, let's call it $100,000. And I won't use that last finger to point, but the, I almost got in trouble. But the, so it could be $100,000. It might be $640-ish thousand, and then there's 500 that is coming on a grant, right?
Right, and see, that 1.2 shall be transferred from the community designated, undesigned fund balance. That, but $500,000 of that is the money that would be coming back, yes.
Okay, so potentially...
Because FinCom had a problem with the borrowing. That was the biggest...
No, no, I get it. So it's, we're borrowing 634.
Yeah.
That is presupposing we're getting that grant.
No, actually, if we presuppose the grant, we're only borrowing 100, and if that's the case, we're not borrowing anything.
The grant, because you had said 1.2. That does contain it.
That contains...
Okay, and the 1.2 that's getting transferred, potentially $500,000 of that, which brings it down to seven. I know you can't change it here.
No, 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 it's still, the project is still $2.1 million.
You know, I'm understanding my point. I'll talk to you later about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, right now, the $500,000 that's coming back from other projects is part of the 1.2.
Yes, yes.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, when you explain it to people, it's really only $700,000 of new money because that other money was, had already gone out. That's what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely.
It's $700,000 of new undesigned fund money.
Yep.
Not the one, not really 1.2, once Trails gives back 500. That's what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely, and then once next year's revenue comes in, that pot replenishes anyway. So, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yes, 700 of new, yes.
Okay, so do we have, we didn't vote on it, though, yet?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Article 8, Community Preservation and Ellen Bridge Project.
Place and support.
Place and support, yeah.
A second, all those in favor? Great.
So the next thing is, just to let you know, the school bus article was pulled. The school department has a different funding source, so we don't need to have that article. So there's been some renumbering. Now, current Article 27, which was Article 28, this is the one you had voted, but you also had asked me for clarification in the, and you got a memo from hand. But the reason it's back here for vote is the, nothing conceptually has changed, but we got legal language from KP that had to go in here for this. So I need you to simply revote it. Nothing has changed, but it's just the legal mumbo jumbo had to be...
Okay, so we don't need to have open space in Chappell Land because we don't have a split tax rate?
Exactly.
Okay, any questions?
So I need you to revote, replace and support that.
I'll make a motion to place and support Article 27.
Second.
All those in favor?
And then we go to Water Sewer, and I need you to vote, if you will, if you are comfortable voting. Articles 31 and 32, so let's go to 31, which is the Water Department, and you will see the figures there.
$1,800,000.
And that comes out to a 3.2% increase, and you will vote the tax rate after, separately after we deal with the warrants.
All right, so we have a motion to place and support Article 31.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, Article 32, Sewer Department, so this is a 3.686903 total vote, and what's that over the previous year?
That is, it increases 6.4 over the previous year.
Okay, so, questions on the board? Do we have a motion to place and support?
Make a motion to place and support.
Second?
Second.
And then we did have just some minor changes on the zoning articles. It was all scrivviness. I don't know if you really even need to redo it.
It's just scrivviness, I don't think we have.
It's just, yes, scrivviness, and just confirm that it's two-thirds vote on all of the definitions. So, okay, and you can motion then to close that.
I make a motion to place a special town meeting. I just said that, all those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right.
And I need a motion to open the special.
So I will make a motion to open the special town meeting.
And I'll pass these down.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And so the first article is Article 43, Snow and Ice Removal. We did not have a dollar on it for you to vote earlier, $73,500.
All right. All right, do we have a motion to place and support Article 43?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Article 44 is an unpaid bill of $117.12.
I make a motion to place and support Article 44.
Second.
All those in favor?
And Article 45, unpaid bills.
I make a motion to place and support Article 45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, and I believe you have done all of the rest of those. Now, we have a new one at the end. And that is what Heather had referenced earlier.
And it's $120,000. Okay, so this is to fix the fitted tanks, and you're assuming that they're going to, that the other two are going to be fitted as well, right?
Yes, and now FinCom has not seen this or voted this either, so.
Okay, unless there's questions on this one, I'll make a motion to place and support Article 52.
Second now.
All those in favor? Great.
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah, sorry, we kept you, Heather.
I just wanted to make sure on that one, in case. And then a motion to, to close that.
I'll make a motion to close the special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
And now you need to consider an action of setting the town water and sewer rates. In the motion, it needs to be clear that it is for the quarter ending June 30th.
Quarter ending June 30th. So you want it to be effective in the fourth quarter, or you want it to be effective in the first quarter? So it's in July, is it in July, or is it in June?
It's, the rate goes for the quarter ending, so it's actually for the fourth quarter.
The billing rate that starts now.
In the fourth quarter.
For first to...
So is April 4th is when it...
April 1st to June 30th.
Okay, so it needs to be effective April 1st?
Yes.
Okay, so then I, let me see if I get, first of all, any questions before I do this? Okay, I will make a motion to set the town water rates at $8.72 per 100 cubic feet, which is an increase of 3.2% effective April 1st of 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
25.
25, excuse me, sorry. That's my fault. 25.
I'd love to turn the clock.
Second, I know.
I didn't catch you there.
That's the words for it.
Now he is getting old.
All right, so, do, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
And the same has to be done for the next.
So I will make a motion to set the town sewer rates at $16.07 per 100 cubic feet, a 6.4% increase, and flat sewer rates to $243, also a 6.4% increase, effective April 1st of 2025.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Excellent. Thanks, Heather. All right, going to old business. Anybody got any old business?
I'm not sure if this is old or new, but there's talk going around that we're not going to have a Harvest Festival this year. And it seems that there should be some committees out there that would be able to undertake that.
So I can answer that. The Harvest Fest was run by the Chamber. We no longer have a Chamber.
Right.
I am meeting with the Worcester Chamber next week. The discussion of the Harvest Fest has come up. There had been a sense that while people attended it, the quality of vendors of late had not been quite at the level that it had been in the past. And there's, Andrew has actually had a lot of discussion with me on whether it could be rebranded in some way. Whether or not we will have time to rebrand it and get vendors for this year, I don't know. I can't honestly tell you that I can. But we are going to try. We want to make it distinct enough from the farmers market, because that's part of the issue. But we also don't want it to be a bunch of commercial-type vendors or handing out of pamphlets. We're looking at maybe a craft-type fair, a craft event, but it needs some rebranding, it sounds like. And so that's what happened. It had been a Chamber-run event, and without the Chamber, and on the heels, frankly, of the farmers market, where we have a lot of people volunteering and whatnot, we are a little limited. And we used to have trouble actually getting people to staff the Harvest Fest, even from the town to staff the towns table. So I'm not saying there won't be anything that weekend, but I don't know that there will that this year, if it takes a while to get crafts. And we want, you know, like, really quality crafts. In fact, I was talking to Barbara, because she's a big crafts person. She goes to all the crafts events. And, you know, people are making beautiful jewelry, people are making sea glass things, you know, whatever it might be that people do for crafts. And it might be microbreweries, but, but again, we don't want it to mirror the farmers market. We want it to be a unique event. So that's kind of where we're at, Mary Lou.
Because I'd like to see, and from people I've talked to, how it used to be, not get these food trucks in there, but like, the Rotary Club, the Sturbridge Lions Club. And they used to do sausage and peppers and all kinds of grinders and everything, and there were, the vendors then were craftsmen.
Yeah, and it seems like it's lost that feel, and...
And the scarecrow contest.
Yeah, that's always great.
Well, we do have that, and we did have that, the scarecrow contest last year. If we could incorporate that with it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I do think it's a shame. I was quite surprised, actually, that this end of the Chamber kind of dissolved. I guess it's my understanding from talking a little bit with Terry that the focus is more on business, businesses that are not necessarily tourist businesses, in terms of what the Chamber's going to focus on in Worcester, right? And so, and I guess the Recreation Committee, I was told by Terry, looked, and they think, you know, that's a big undertaking.
Yes.
And special events, I mean, we put on a few things. Five volunteers can't do that. That was kind of a full-time job from the Chamber. And I did years ago ask about, there was a time when it wasn't all food trucks. And I think people started to not go as much the last couple of years because they're, because they are all food trucks. But years ago, they used to have Taste of Sturbridge, if you recall, and you'd buy a ticket, and the public house would put out chowder, and all the restaurants would put out an appetizer or something. And I had inquired and why that went away, and at the time, I was told by the Chamber that restaurants did no, no longer wanted to do it. And it went away because they had a hard time staffing their restaurants on a Sunday and doing that, and it didn't behoove them anymore. Because I inquired of the Chamber, why do you have, you know, food trucks when we have great restaurants? And she, I was told there was not an interest. So, you know, the, I mean, I didn't know, I guess you're trying to separate it from the farmers market, but I didn't know if maybe the very last farmers market could be a bigger...
If there's room, yeah.
You know, the very last one, try to incorporate a little bit of what was the...
I could talk to Andrew, as long as the vendors that we're committed to for the farmers market would still have their space.
Well, and also, this is the, we're, all of the undergirding of all of this touches on the same thing, which is volunteers and staffing and asks. So I would be reluctant this year to make an ask of the people volunteering at the farmers market to put on a huge... At the end of it, because I think we're lucky that they're doing already what they're doing. So I just think it's, I think to Mary Lou's initial kind of framing of this, which was, well, why don't we know? So first of all, there should be a clear articulation on it, right? Because it is, it is a fair question. And it's a very reasonable explanation, which is Chamber's not doing it anymore. So then we have to kind of go back to the drawing board and, you know, for April to November, it's just not particularly realistic.
So I'll know more generally from the Worcester Chamber if there's any will for these types of events when I meet with them on Wednesday.
Does Tim Murray still have it up?
No, it's a woman.
I don't know if he uses it.
But did this branch of the Chamber dissolve? Can you give a better explanation?
Yes, it did. There is no local, there is no more Sturbridge regional. No, there is no more, the building that we had them in here, all of that is gone, so.
So it's a big change.
Yeah, yeah, if you can keep us in the loop, and, you know, I know this year probably be tough, but if the town can take it over, maybe next year, we'll get a committee together and nominate Samantha Kabinsky to be on it, and we'll go from there.
There you go. Nominate her for chair?
That's right, she'll take care of it.
I will vehemently oppose that. I also miss going back and miss Action Item, and with M, which is consideration and possible action assigned the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants. I'll make a motion to that effect. Does anybody have that, a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. All right, that was old business from Mary Lou. Any old business from anybody else? All right, that was old business from Mary Lou, any old business from anybody else? And I think, any new business, new business from anybody else?
Oh, I, I have one new business. Why is the upstairs, and I haven't checked in the last couple of weeks, but why is the upstairs bathroom always closed in the library? It, it always seems to be out of order, out of order, out of order.
That toilet, they think there's a new toilet coming, I think there's an issue with the toilet up there.
Haunted, it's haunted.
Yeah, there's some toilet issue, I think.
Pretty much through the winter. Oh, okay, all right, I was curious.
For the record, the lives of our toilet is not haunted.
Well, it's important to know, so I mean, that's actually some of the important stuff.
All right, so moving on, uh, correspondence, I don't think we have any, do we? Okay, no correspondence, moving on to minutes. We have quite a few, all right, beginning with February 20th of 2024. I'm not here. Any edits? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February 20th, 2024.
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor? And one abstention, because I was not there. All right, moving on to the minutes of November 18th, 2024. Any edits?
I have one under on page two. Article 1, um, second sentence, it said, when it was discovered that the lights were custom-built in the 1970s, the town found a that could replicate. I think that should be they.
Okay. Any other edits?
That was it.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the November 18th, 2024 minutes as amended?
Second. I mean, so moved.
Sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? All right, moving on to, uh, the minutes of March 3rd, 2025. Any edits? Ready, all right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 3rd, 2025 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And we have one abstention, mm-hmm. All right, moving to the March 12th, 2025 minutes. Do we have a, any edits or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 12th, 2025 minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And one abstention? And then, uh, March 17th, 2025, uh, do we have any amendments to the meeting matter?
Not for me.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 17th, 2025 minutes as written.
I will second, okay, second. All those in favor? Great, um, and I do not think we have an executive session, no residents in this one. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. We always get a lot done.
We always get a lot done.